If we go ahead and start our work session here, do any of you have any questions on the minutes from last? You'd like to talk about, if you have comments about?
It just came through, mine came through.
Okay, if the minutes looked all right, we just have a couple items on the agenda. One of them reviewing the arena rental fee. Where Shawna sent that out earlier to you, when it has the yellow part that's highlighted. And then she prepared a new one that's in front of you. That's maybe just a little easier to follow. It has, you know, the rates are about the same, well, they're not about, they are, it's the same rates, but they might break it down just a little easier. One difference would be on the one that's in front of you is that for the 4H, sometimes they have a 4H show be on a Saturday. So rather than actually list, rather than list that as one of the items, it's just if they wanted to have a show on Saturday, they would just pay the, which is the same, the weekend fee will be just the same. And, but they would pay in addition to that if they want the concession stand and the restrooms open. Uh, one thing we might point out, the adult rate is, the adult rate is twice as much as the youth rate. But we did plug in a youth rate there to kind of encourage our youth to participate in posse and 4H. Well, I think they're pretty reasonable. I know we had a call from a neighboring county wanting to know what our rates were. And they were anxious, I mean, if we have room for them, they'd be anxious to come to Hooper. So.
That's interesting.
I think so too. Well, we used West Haven as well as the Golden Spike to kind of set, I don't know, have a standard that we could use to compare to. Trying to think if there's anything else that would be, might have questions on.
Back from some citizens about it?
Well, we really haven't yet, even as far as I know, even some of them that have come in, they just want to know what the increase will be and.
Yeah, well, my, I just noticed my wife was panning through Facebook and somebody had posted it on there. That was, I didn't know if that was going to create anything or not. It seemed super reasonable to me. I mean, I've always thought that the city shouldn't take a bath on it. We ought to pay, but we have to pay guys, people to, you know, man this, man the arena and take care of it, I mean.
And if, if you were to look at the seasonal rate, for example, and work it backwards, you know, we plan on 25 weeks. And if you were to work it back backward, you know, um, the math, you'll find it's really, they really get quite a discount if it's a seasonal rate as opposing coming in just by the hour.
I mean, I think isn't the city's philosophy really, we're just trying to zero out, you know, and not trying to make any money on anything, but we're trying to pay, maintain.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, kind of like tomato days, we're not really trying to make anything on tomato days. We're just trying to, back in the day when we actually did it, I mean, just trying to come out with, you know.
When we actually did it, yeah.
You know, so I mean, I mean, that's kind of the philosophy of the city. I think it's a good philosophy, but we don't, I don't think we want to go upside down either.
No. Yeah, especially. Well, having reviewed this with public works, I think they're comfortable with the rates. Where they are when it comes time to pay the employee to go down and work the arena, for example. They want additional workings and that's also listed on the B schedule in front of you. That cut out, okay. Yeah, the only comment that we've had. Yep, it's that one that I'll have in front.
I'm curious, because I pass up arenas every day, going up the road. About the time that I'm heading up to the studio, there's always a tractor there working it, so.
Yeah, I mean, usually right around 2:33, people come over to work it.
Yep.
And you might need to feel like times that it's not done and that it's too wet for our,
Right.
equipment to be in there, you know, in the deficits, work at least once a day, Monday through the.
Thursday. Yeah, if they wanted it worked on a Friday, they just have to pay for that to happen.
Well, five days a week will do it. If they want Saturday, want someone to work it like between, if they had a barrel race or something and they, every two or three runners, they wanted it reworked again. Then that's going to cost a little more, well, $35 an hour.
And that's.
But that's watering it, that's watering it and reworking it.
Right. And I noticed there was like a third garbage can sitting there by the north end.
A third garbage can?
Sitting there at the north end.
I don't think we even talked about garbage cans.
So, I mean, well, I just noticed, I'm like, oh, so they must be getting ready for groups to come in.
Oh, yeah.
There's a third garbage can sitting there now, so, you know, I notice stuff as I go by it, so.
Sure.
Um, you know, I notice when things are muddy, I notice when things are worked and ready, so.
Well, I think for the most part, I think people are real pleased with the arena. Not, not just the fact that there's not that many around anymore.
Right, do the fees, sorry, do the fees extend to the, what they call the back arena? The warm-up arena?
It would, yeah, that, that, we didn't add additional, but that wouldn't be worked or watered.
Okay, so.
I guess we could water it if it's like real dusty, but that wasn't planned to be worked or watered.
So the renters will need to know that that area is included. So if they are renting, no one else can come and use it.
Right.
But that, that's included in there, but the services are not done for the back arena.
Right, that's right.
And are, when they do rent, are they given instructions of where it's appropriate to park their trailers? Or?
I don't think so either, I haven't seen any instruction.
Right. Right. Usually just on tomato days, is there a big problem? But.
Yeah, tomato days.
That's a whole different issue with it, but no, I was just curious, just to see, you know, because some come in and park a certain way and no one else can get in there to park, you know, just things like that.
Sure, well.
Yeah, you can just, right, okay.
And actually, that's a pretty good part of the arena too, it's just the park, it is a lot bigger than what it'd be years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, if they go in and park the right way, they used to have that sign up that showed them how to park. And you get a lot more trailers in there versus what people do now, but.
You know, back in the day when you just rode your horse to the park.
This is true.
You didn't worry about a trailer, right?
That's what I did, until I got bucked up one too many times and I was done.
I can also get legal time to look at, see if any of the stuff has changed and get that caught up, because that might be a bigger job then.
Reed will appreciate that too.
We'll give Reed a little while to work on that.
I'm having a hard time hearing other than those that are talking into the microphone. Shawna, do you have a microphone? No.
How's that, is that better?
That's much better.
Okay.
So what were you telling?
No, I was just going, I was speaking to council about allowing for a pause on the review of the titles after four, allowing us to coordinate all the needed updates and draft those into a revision draft for them to view. And then work on getting that approved. And once that's come to the table for reading and approval, we'll move on to the other chapters.
Makes a lot of sense. For example, when I looked over the ones we did last time, there are a lot more changes probably that need to be made just to update it to current law than we, than we even talked about. So there's some work to be done there. You'll find that again tonight as we go through these. They're mostly driven by state law and we need to talk about just how we deal with them.
Hey. I don't know, did we mention, did Jared send you, did you, all got the response from him on the comment? On this one public comment? Well, I can share this with you.
No, I don't.
Hey, it's pretty close, I mean, yeah, exactly. Usually they hack my name up, so I'm surprised he got mine.
So Jared's comment was about what?
On how well the arena's been taken care of during the summer.
Okay.
So he just.
That's basically what Lisa just said, right?
Yeah, I hadn't even read that yet.
Yeah.
Basically, someone said that the field wasn't, the arena wasn't worked very often. And Jared's comment is, it's worked every day during the work week, so. Lisa was testifying without knowing what she was testifying about, so.
And it turned out.
If we have eyewitness right here on the council, that'll.
I didn't even know that that's, sorry.
It's not a good thing to unprompt a testimony, Reed, in the court of law, if testimony comes unsolicited.
Well, you might be held in contempt, but we don't have a.
Awesome.
Well, we can sure let public works know that there is someone that's following up on them every morning, five days a week, so.
Lights are on. So sometimes, I think my husband has Jared's number, sometimes I text Jared and tell him the lights.
Well, we still have a ways to go on getting the new lights all up, but it is, you know, now that the weather's going to get better, I think things will start moving faster on that.
Did you forward that email to me from the animal services? Okay, perfect. So I'll be attending a meeting on April 12th at 10:00 AM with the Weaver County Animal Services. They're going to go over their funding and different things. And then did, and then did everybody get the public safety one or just me?
I don't remember. In public safety.
From David Martin? All right, well, he's the Western States rep. And what he was, oh, for a small family business, the MSM Public Safety. What they basically have is like the, yeah, that, that card with, you know, speed limit, you're speedy as this, you know, those different things. Recon police power box, just some different things. I think he's obviously maybe soliciting equipment, but I guess he has, I was wondering if we have any interest in any public safety needs of such. But since we go through, the trailers are delivered. I don't know if it's a rental or what, I'd have to look into it further, but that was basically what the email was saying.
Oh, not we own one?
We do own one of those.
Are we using that much anymore? I know that was.
Well, we have it up in council member Oster's neighborhood right now, trying to.
Slow me down, going home.
Uh, slow him down, yeah.
My, my two cents on some of that type of equipment, and I, I think, I don't know that everyone probably agrees, but I, I do think that there's a couple places we could put signs that flash speed limit. I, I know some people say that doesn't deter them, but it always, every time I come up on one, I'm like, oh crap.
What am I doing, yeah?
Well, just, so it'll tell us when someone goes over.
Yeah, the trailer does, I'm just talking about those solar, the solar signs that are.
My point being is that I don't think we've got any messages from your neighborhood, I think it's working.
You will, you will tonight, because there was a couple motorcycles, kids on motorcycles going around there seeing how fast they.
Oh, no kid, well.
That's the best, the sheriff will tell you, that's the problem with those. The downside to that is kids use them and say, hey, I got, I got going 43 and you know what I'm saying?
Just see how fast we can go in six seconds, right?
I just noticed tonight that, and I'm. Yeah, exactly.
Then they'll be like, oh.
Yeah, we should have a picture.
I'll text him a little bit later, I know the one kid was going over 25 miles an hour, because I walked by right when he went flying by there, so.
Well, it should have flashed and taken his picture, going that, he was going that much over.
Dang it.
Most of it on Facebook.
You're gonna get a kid on a dirt bike with a helmet on, I'm pretty sure you're not going to figure out who it is unless I tell you.
Well, that was.
That's a good point.
Had his helmet.
First report. That, about the motorcycle, that was pretty funny, about the motorcycle gang. Yeah. They won't refer them to the metro gang.
How much are those trailers? Are those, whatever you call those?
I don't know what it costs.
I, I don't know what.
I was curious if we wanted to have more than one, I mean, if, you know.
I could contact this gentleman, but.
I don't know if those signs are, you know, what they cost, if they're worth their cost, but it just, like I say, when I drive down like 4,700 and there's that one coming in, I'm always like, oh.
And they have one up here on 5100 West too, and I know I, well, no, of course it's never flashing for me, I don't want you to think.
Follow one on grid.
What I'm saying is, Barry, you're going too slow, that's what they're trying to say.
Pick it up, pick it up. Yeah, okay, I just was, wanted to bring that up just because I didn't know what the situation was with our safety protocol with those things.
Did the city buy the one that you have now?
Yeah.
We did, yeah, it's, it's owned by Hooper City. And it is easy to set up, easy to set up in the first place or to relocate it. So we're.
All solar, isn't it, solar?
It is, yeah. And it may be about due to move in your area.
Probably, that, those people have had an issue down there, that's nice, but I mean, we know we'd bring it back if there's an issue. I think sharing the wealth is not a bad thing either, there's other neighborhoods that need it or other streets that need it, that's a good thing.
I'd like to see it on 51, those dump trucks going down that road or.
I hear you. Yeah, if there's anybody that has a better, an idea, that's all good, it's been there for a couple of weeks now, I think, over there, so.
Well, we thought that was a better idea to begin with and putting in speed bumps.
Yeah.
Of which we, and we wouldn't necessarily do that, but they wondered what could be done to pull down, but hopefully it's worked.
I was approached by an individual that says are representing multiple developers that we are in the process of some legal action. So I was approached by an individual that was aware of, I guess, multiple developers that say they're in the pursuit of legal action against the city. I briefly reached out to the individual just to say, you know, what's going on, and the individual told me that he would really like to come before the city council to have an open discussion. And that there would be six or seven developers that would like to be part of that discussion. And so I said I'd bring it up to council to see, you know, if we could get them on the agenda. I don't know, you might have a whole bunch more involved with that situation, but I said, it seems like it'd be better to have open discussion than, than jumping right into a lawsuit, so I don't know, I don't know any of the details and I don't know who's right or wrong or if there's a right or wrong, but it seems like.
Well, I don't think we've heard anything in the city. We, um, we've had one development that everything has gone through an attorney, right? Right from the beginning, ever, he's never written a letter. And we've never responded to him. Developers always gone through an attorney, so I don't know if that's.
Is, is there, so I'm, I apologize for my, I guess, lack of knowledge. Is there a ripcord procedure that makes sense, Reed? Do you familiar with that term?
Ripcord? No, did he tell you anything more, what's he concerned about?
Um, well, I tried not to dig too deep because I didn't want to represent, you know, the city on, like, I was just trying to say, hey, what's going on? And his concern was he's petitioned to be, come before the city council, but that it's been blocked. And so my comment was, if that's the case, then that's fine, we'll put you on the, I'd be glad to get you on the agenda and you can plead your case. I mean, I, if that's, if that's the excuse, if it's an excuse and that's being used, then, then let's vet the excuse and allow the gentleman to come talk to the city council if it's, you know, I guess that's, that's my only two cents is, I don't know, I talked a little bit with, with Councilman Hill. I called to try to pick his brain on whether I should call the gentleman or not, because I didn't want to, I didn't want to, you know, put myself liable to have a discussion about things that's above my pay grade, but I did reach out and just said, you know, I want to reach back to you, but at the same time, any type of discussion further than, yeah, I think it's worth hearing, would, would have to come before the city council in a public meeting, not with me one-on-one.
What's the procedure on that?
I, I don't know.
When a developer wants to come talk to the city council.
So we're going to start meeting at 7:00, but I see all your questions are valid. Happy to have any discussions like that, but I don't want to put specific rules. You can give us. Subdivision that you're speaking about, we.
And that's why I said it might not be for public meeting, but.
Some of those things might already be in play, but I would suggest that it's a very.
Shawna, you're coming in and out, and it's hard to, a little hard to hear.
Sorry.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, if they're coming about a specific issue, it depends on what the issue is. Normally they'd start at the planning commission and then they'd appeal whatever they want to to the city council. If it's a general issue of, of lack of cooperation by city or city staff, that would be something for the, for the council to hear. But complaints about an individual subdivision, they ought to go through the right process on.
It was my understanding, the complaint is directly against the city staff and handling of, of certain work. So I have no clue, once again, there's no judgment on my part, but it seems like if that's the concern, that they probably should come in and discuss that with the council.
That's fine. If it's the one that the mayor mentioned, you might want to catch him privately and just go over what's happened already, because it's been a real irritation that the subdivider hasn't done any of the right things he should be doing.
Right. Okay, well, thank you, so.
And there's just, we never told anyone.
Well, seeing that it is 7:00, we'll call the council meeting to order for Thursday, March the 4th, 2021. And before we begin the, and go over the items that are on the agenda, council member Northrup has agreed to lead us in a pledge allegiance, and then council member Cox will lead us in a reverence.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy this night. We're grateful for, for this city and our state and this beautiful land that we live in. Please help us that we can pay, pay attention to those things that we need to accomplish this evening, that we can take care of them in a calm and timely manner. Please watch over the leaders of our city and our state and our country, that they can make decisions that are in accord with, with thy will. We're grateful again for the, for the blessings that we receive, for the moisture and the beautiful weather that we enjoy. Please watch over us and guide us, these things we pray for in the name of our son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Hey, I can't imagine there'd be any conflicts of interest with the two agenda items, but we'll ask the question anyway if there's any conflicts of interest among the council members with any of us as far as what's on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to the minutes. You've had a chance to review the minutes from February 18th, 2021 council meeting. You see any amendments, amendments or corrections that have to be made there? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the January city council meeting, January.
February.
Sorry, we're in March already, February 4th, council meeting. No, 18th, okay, somebody else want to make the motion?
Okay, we have a.
I got the motion.
A motion from council member Cox, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from council member Oster, any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Were there any opposed? Okay. Okay. They pass. Okay, the first item of city business we have is a discussion on the arena rental fee increases for the upcoming year. Uh, as we've reviewed those, we felt that that's something that should be addressed and looked at and. Uh, one. Oh, yes. Yeah. Do we have any, any citizens' comments? Uh, I guess you could, want to read?
Yeah.
Read this one.
We did receive one citizen comment by email. Um, I'll go ahead and read that just for the record from Cheryl Sandberg. Says that, um, I would like to express some concerns with the management of the arena and costs associated with rental. First, I am not, I am not sure most, I am sure most agree that Hooper has a very large horse population. We all appreciate having an available arena. That being said, the arena is quote rented each weeknight to various groups, organizations. The cost needs to be increased. Will the added funds go directly back into the arena? When would the increases be assessed? Well, agreements have already been sent out for this year on them. Would the increases be used to better maintain the grounds? I am associated with a couple of groups that rent the arena, and I know that last year we made your change in the way it was maintained and worked. Last year on our night, we worked times yearly, times early in the year, and it was never worked a single week after that. I understand that occasionally it may not get worked, but I, but to never get worked was pretty bad. When on top of that, we hear that the fee may be increased. Hooper has multiple parks, only one arena. Are fees associated with the other parks being increased also? Thought for clarification, changes, and please consider the items mentioned. Virtual regards, Cheryl.
Okay, so we, in response to that, as far as public works, uh, we did get a response back, which all of you have maybe had a chance to review from our public works director, but he's indicated, I, I could just read this, that I think will just sum up this, that for someone to say it was worked two or three times and never again, uh, probably is not correct for last year. There would be times if after the water was turned off, you know, at the end of the season, after October fifteenth, that they wouldn't go down and just keep working it to stir up, stir up dust. They can't water it. Or if during a rainstorm or something like that, it's unlikely they'll go down and work it, but there may not be anyone riding it during a rainstorm anyway. But I don't know if you have any other discussion on that. Uh, main thing is, I think our public works, um, group will, will always do their best. They'll always do their best to maintain the arena and make sure it's in good riding condition for those who will be using it. Any other comments maybe that have come in?
So if somebody out on Zoom would like to make an official public comment, you'll need to go ahead and, and turn on your microphone, uh, state your name and address. Not an official public comment.
So, so it's talking about Fridays. So has it worked on Fridays or not?
No.
So that would be true. Yeah, it would have been worked on Friday. Probably a couple of times, right? But like I said.
They will go down in the event there's a, uh, the youth, the four-H groups will have a show on Saturdays where they'll have activities with their horses and they, they're set up to do that. Um, the rental rate, uh, per hour is still the same on a Friday or Saturday, and then, and then there will be a cost to go down and work it. And if they wanted to stay down there, you don't say work it several times in the course of a few hours, and there's a price that they would have to pay to have our public works people and the equipment available uh, during the whole day if that's what they wanted them. But they would have to request that.
If it was a, a group that wanted to rent it on a Friday, would they do that knowing that it would not be worked that day, or would their rent fee cover somebody working the ground?
If they rented it on a Friday, uh, it, it could, it would be worked one time.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, so just trying to clarify, so if this, if this group had been renting it on a Friday, we're, we're, we apparently weren't doing that. Moving forward with the new fees, we will do that?
They would be. Yeah, well, if, if they've, if they've rented it, then we'll make sure it's, uh, ready for them.
So, um, that the day when the, the public works department's not around, then we'd still provide someone to, to go.
Right. They, they included, that's why we included a, a cost on the sheet that you have for arena additional water and work time. So, but, but that would be included if they only have to do it one time, if they rent it for that.
But if they were a weekly Friday, that gonna be a seasonal fee and would someone go work it?
If they pay a seasonal fee for that, then it would be worked for them. Now, if they're, if they're paying to ride down there, it'll be taken care of.
So that's my question. On the seasonal rates, are we specifying one night a week for, like, their contract for that twenty-six week period? Or is it, how many, how many days per week is it? Yeah, and how many hours is it for a seasonal contract?
So, um, contracts kind of get sent out and each group, it's divided into the, from nine to three, it's open ride. Right? Monday through Friday, open to the public as a park. Um, starting around three o'clock, the sprinklers come on and they work the arena. And the, like, youth, like, four-H youth, or like a posse groups, has, like, three to and then, um, it'd be a little bit later than that. They've got about like a two-hour block. Uh, and then after that, there's usually an adult riding group that comes in from about six or seven to nine.
Yeah, about seven.
Seven to nine. And so it's rent, and they pick, they usually just do one, they have one dedicated day a week for each group. But it is booked Monday through Thursday for both time slots the whole week, twenty-five weeks of the entires.
And, and not Friday? So.
Uh, I, you know, I don't know about that. Sorry.
But it, but it could be.
On Friday, yeah.
Yeah, it could be if that's what they, if they did a seasonal.
So there is a seasonal contract.
Yeah, it's a block. It's, you know.
So the block, sorry, the block of time, the two, there's two time slots each night?
Mm-hmm.
And what are those time slots? How many hours?
I think it's like three-thirty to like six, or is it four to six?
I think it was four to six.
Two and a half hours. I'm sorry. I don't know for sure on that part.
I think it's four to six.
When kids go to posse, it's usually four.
Twenty-five weeks, though. Is that right?
Yeah, it is. It's twenty-five weeks.
That's, it starts from April, April fifteenth through October fifteenth. That's, that's the.
So if I want to rent it, if I come off the street and I want to rent it, it costs me fifty bucks for an hour. But if I want to rent it for the season, it costs me about five bucks an hour?
If you do the math, if, that's what I say, if you get a, it might be a little more than that, but if you do the, the seasonal rate.
That's a pretty good deal.
There's no question.
Really good.
But the twenty-five or the fifty dollars an hour is a good rate for adults, and then the, as it shows on here, the, uh, the youth is half that, twenty-five dollars an hour.
When would we have time for hourly or daily rentals if it's always being used other than Saturday and Sunday?
Because you can still rent it, like, on a Saturday. You can still rent it for a few hours on a Saturday, or you can rent it for the entire day for a Saturday.
So it's just Saturdays.
Uh, or, you know.
Or earlier in the day.
Yeah, usually, we've never, ever had anyone request for the early day during the week. But we do sometimes on Fridays and Saturdays. We don't technically, we never really rent it on a Sunday, because then we don't have the obligation to have staff down there on a Sunday to do that. Um, but on, but each four-H or posse group, or four-H usually does a show every year for each group, and that's usually done on a Saturday. Um, so that would apply for like the hourly rate. Um, or, um, sometimes adult riding groups, things like that, or sometimes we do have a request to have small events at the arena, like separate private rodeos and things like that. So that's, we have like maybe an hourly or a.
I don't, I don't ever remember anyone saying that someone rents it for a season all day long. You know, where they're there right from morning till, till nine o'clock at night.
That rental agreement, there's.
Right, yeah, they are. I mean, there are some state statutes for equine, you know, exemptions, but, um, we do require that they hold, like, liability insurance city so that they can, you know, if there was anything to occur.
Uh, and that might be one thing. You can see, uh, we had Shawna write in there that we had missed that if they have spectators, then there is a thousand dollar deposit if there's going to be sitting in the bleachers as well as the insurance policy.
Is it a deposit or, so they get the money back if they?
They, they all get the money back, right?
Have more requests for seasonal rentals than we have time slots.
Town.
I've never heard any, uh, I don't think, I haven't heard that that's been a problem.
Ten slots, basically, right?
Yeah, I've never really run into a situation where we have a more, more youth groups and more adult riding groups wanting to rent it than slots have. Always just been a consistent, you're kind of the only groups that are out here, come here on Mondays, so on.
So all, all we need to do from this conversation is just make sure we have somebody working the ground on Friday, if we have a contract for Friday.
And hopefully that's what it does, like a small increase to these prices will ensure that we go forward and we're gonna work it, and it just solidify the things that we already do.
And to answer her one question, the fees, the increase of the fees and stuff that's going directly to.
Yeah, it goes right back into the park.
To the parks.
Right.
So the last question I had was on the youth daily rental, which would be a Saturday. Were we really only charging them twenty-five dollars for the entire day?
We were, and we were. Um, and I, I can't speak to the history of those decisions. I know it was a topic, um, but they, they did only get that daily show the entire day for.
I just, doing the math, you go seven hundred percent increase from twenty-five to two hundred, seems pretty steep, but twenty-five for an entire day, holy cow, that's.
Yeah, and, and it would be, it would be, also it could be hourly, so some of these shows, if they are only going to do for two hours, we would just charge them that hourly rate. Um, but, I mean, it, it was on the side of not sustainable. So they, not only did they get the discounted rate, they also got one show a year plus, so the concessions. And they only had to maybe pay for additional workings should they request it. But, I mean, we've made significant upgrades the inside of the concession stands, and we're working on significant upgrades. So I, those prices need to slowly reflect what our goal is.
Devin, we, we talked about that, and that's when we had a group call about increase. They had no problem with the twenty-five dollars an hour for youth. So I think it's a real competitive price uh, for any arena around, uh, better than most, actually.
It's almost like we ought to just do away with the daily rental fee and just go with the hourly, you know, and just, because it's the same amount. The daily fee is eight hours.
We, we kind of added that in here, but we think that's what would be, when we talked about it, we think that's what will be used the most is just an hourly rate.
Yeah.
Unless they go seasonal.
Right. Okay.
So if, uh, at this point, if, you know, after we've discussed this, uh, you know, I'm not sure, Reed, if this takes a motion to approve these, to put the resolution in process or, uh.
Go in as part of the, the fee schedule, is that correct?
Right, uh-huh.
Uh, you're, you're gonna have to do a resolution to adopt all of the changes to the fee schedule, so you don't really, this if you're gonna combine it with others.
It's only listed as discussion today, so we'll solidify the rates that you'd like to charge today. And then you'll see it come back to the agenda on the third Thursday. And.
For the motion, okay.
And that will, that will have the resolution attached with an additional copy of your finalized suggestions.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
One last question. The arena lights, are they included with the seasonal rental? Or with the daily rate, if they do it at night?
No, their, their arena lights are in addition to what listed there.
In addition to the seasonal rental.
Right.
And I think usually when they, by the time they start renting it, it's light till almost like nine thirty, ten, so they're out before that. But we've always accommodated, always accommodated, like, should they need the lights, like, you know, we're really good to help them through that. But there, there really hasn't been a need for it either.
I don't think it would hurt to not, um, even have a solar light, though, on that, um, west parking area, a solar light.
Where the, they park the trailers and trucks?
Just because I know when they're finished riding, you know, it's dusk, it's getting dark, but by the time they're loading up and different things, it is dark.
Yeah, yeah, we can, I can talk to Jared about that.
Maybe just a solar light of some kind.
Okay, so there are no lights that come on after dark?
Yeah, yeah, it could be on times.
I think, is there like one or, there's like one or two.
I was thinking there was some in the parking, but maybe there's not.
No, it's, it's pretty dark.
Okay.
Open part of, part of our upgrade from our ramp grant last year, could we put some of that money towards something like that, perhaps?
Light out in the back arena, but I don't know if that's, it's ever on.
The back arena light, well, now we'll have to check it for summer, but it, it has been on in the past.
Yes, it has, but over on that.
Double check it, yeah.
Over on that northwest.
Arena, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll check on both of the areas, the lights for the parking lot and the lights in the back. Okay, next on the city business is a review slash discussion on the Hooper City ordinances. So today we're going to go through title three and four, which involves business regulations and licensing. So I guess we'll do it just like we did last meeting. We just kind of go through areas that you may have highlighted or have questions on, and Shawna will make note of that, and then Reed will take some time over the next little while to just update anything that the, that, uh, that needs to be updated as it relates to state ordinances.
Let me maybe preface it by, particularly in the revenue and finance area, talking about, uh, some of the things that uh, really ought to be considered. Uh, the, the sale and use tax, the, uh, municipality has the ability to impose a one percent amount, uh, that's added on to the other state amounts. Um, and we've already done that. You'll see that in the ordinance here. Uh, but pretty much everything else about, uh, collection and distribution of, uh, sales taxes, state regulated. Uh, so a lot of the material that's in here have been, has been superseded by state law uh, now, so I think my suggestion for this area and probably also for the telecommunications area uh, would be to retain, uh, the amount that, uh, we've asked for the local addition. Uh, but then just refer to the fact that, uh, we'll, uh, base it, uh, the collection and the distribution on, on state law. Because that's what's happened anyway.
Okay, so that, that is one area that I had a question on. So that one percent is a one percent on sales tax for businesses that are located in Hooper City. A one percent on sales tax for businesses that are located in Hooper City. And that would be over and above the sales tax that we're giving, given from the state. Is that right?
That's correct, but it can only be imposed on the entities that are taxable based on state statute. For example, our statute says you're imposing it on service. And you really don't do that, if you've got a doctor that's performing services in, in your city, you don't impose a tax on their services. So most, many services you can't tax, you can only tax the ones that are provided for by state law.
Okay, and, and is that one percent also state law, or does a city have, can they adjust that if?
You can make it less, you can't make it more.
Okay, alright. Now forget I asked that question then.
So where state statute now is to collect sales tax on internet based sales. Is Hooper City able to recoup one percent of internet based sales? And how do we do that?
That should, again, all of the collection and payback of sales tax is done entirely by the state. So to the extent that the state is collecting that and able to identify that it's in Hooper, they should be providing that amount as well. Shawna, do you know any more about that, about the internet sales part?
I don't, I, I don't know, I can, I can, I can call and ask as far as how they're deducting that. They don't really give us a printout when we get our distribution for sales. But I, what I do know is usually there's, when you do make a purchase of any kind, or even a business has a sales tax. They did, dedicated to a tax zip code or a taxing area, that's how it flows. Us, I can get more detail. As far as. I don't know if it's separate at the state and they just, similar to like how they can portion of like. I don't.
So we can find out the answer to that question, but the other thing that occurred to me in talking to Shawna today was that. In both these areas and in the impact fee area. State law has been significantly changed since these were adopted. And so many of the provisions are not citing current code. The, the code provisions and state code are voluminous, that's an easy way to say it. So the way to start probably in these revenue areas would be, I think, to start. With the League of City and Towns and see if they have some model ordinances that have been adopted. And approved since any changes have been made in the state law. And then we'll take a look at those and modify those to reflect any things that we want to do uniquely in, in Hooper. The, the idea of going through all those state statutes and trying to create our own ordinance from scratch. Boy, that's going to be very, very time consuming and probably not worth the time because. What we get is going to always be regulated by the state anyway. Now on the impact fee areas, that's jumping ahead a little bit. That also has been completely rewritten since this code was adopted. And they are very, very picky about how they let you justify your impact fees. And that's why I asked last time if we were looking at making changes in the impact fees as part of the. New general plan analysis, and if we are, that's something that really ought to start right now because it's lengthy process to do the study. And, and then go through the approval process. So my, my comments would be kind of the same there, that if. The League of City and Towns has a model ordinance that's been adopted under the new code. We could start with that and make modifications and then just replace what we have. If not, I'll have to go through what we've got and try to make sure none of it violates the new state provisions.
One, one item that come out, came up with me that, that I heard about as far as even like our roads here. Impact fees that affect those, especially the new ones that are put in new subdivisions. The, there's different grades of asphalt that can be used, there's, I mean, it's just like anything else, you kind of get for what you pay for and. Our impact fees could either be for a, a three year road or a five year road or a ten year type road, you know, as far as how long it lasts. I think a while back they elected or at least made the decision that. That the materials used for the road really should last. Ten years or so, you know, you don't want to, within three years after a new road's put in, now the. You know, the city's having to go back and fix potholes and that, that if it had it been a. Better material, it would have lasted longer. So I guess my question is, if there are, when it involves impact fees, if there's areas that. The, the city, can we, can we require a certain standard? Like maybe we've done with roads. That might give a little more longevity to what these fees are covering. I mean, I don't know what else there would be, I just use roads as an example.
Well, the impact fee for roads would be based on what the city determines they want to use for the roads. If, if they're different qualities and you want the higher quality, then that would, that would have an impact on the impact fees. But, but keep in mind, impact fees are only assessed against those that are, are new.
Right.
In the city, so if you're improving your roads, most of that's going to have to be paid. In other means other than, than impact fees.
Right.
Yet force a developer to improve the roads all over the city, when you're not doing the same thing with your own residents. And if you go to three dash two dash four, that outlines the areas that you have authorized by ordinance to have. Impact fees imposed, that would be parks, which would include trails, storm drains. Storm drainage, transportation, which would cover roads as well, and sewer impact fees. So those are the general areas where impact fees are applicable in the county or in the city. And so if there, if, if you want impact fees on other areas, we'd have to do that as part of a. Statute change and then we'd have to do the, the study to justify what those amounts would be. And if you want to change the current amounts, again, you're going to have to do a study to show that that's justified.
Alright, that's, that's good to know. Those studies will never hurt, you know, I think it's just good to. To do as many of those as we can in the process, like you mentioned Reed, in the process of. Reviewing our plan here for Hooper. Try to get as many studies as we can in place to make sure we're headed in the right direction.
Now, the, the other tax and revenue one that. Kind of the same thing applies that I just mentioned, that's the transfer for the. The telecommunications tax, that, that's an interesting one, and I think. The state statute doesn't allow the percent that we have imposed here, so we're gonna have to adjust that from four percent to three point five. And, and the, the question that, that comes up nowadays is, what is telecommunications? Cable companies, you know, putting down cable for. For internet use. Argue that, that that is not telecommunications, that's internet. On the other hand, right now we're communicating through the internet and that's certainly telecommunications. So to the extent that you use that in telecommunications, that's maybe going to be something that ought to be subject to the tax. So those are, are issues that we probably need to think through and find out what other areas are doing as we redo the ordinance. That probably just confuses everyone.
I think it helps.
Well, heavily regulated by state law, it's really hard to do much different than what the state has already given us.
Right.
So it looks like most of that first section is really, there's no sense in it discussing much until we get the new code.
Like Reed's gets some work cut out for him.
Well, they would have a question, so my first question comes on four dash one dash two. Anyone have a question before that?
Well, moving to title four.
Yeah. Somebody had a question before that, that's great, I just, the first thing I've marked. Four dash one dash two.
I had a one and three dash two dash four that Reed just mentioned. It talks about incorporated versus unincorporated areas of the city. And I didn't know we had unincorporated areas, I thought the city was city. Do we have unincorporated areas in our city?
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think we do either.
No, you can't, it wouldn't be part of the city.
So number two, three, two, four, A two. Says unincorporated.
So three, two?
Three dash two dash four. Under A two.
There's a storm drainage impact. Yeah, that's just a misprint.
Yeah, that's.
So everything's incorporated.
Yeah, it is, that's just a misprint.
We can consider that a typo, is that what we're saying?
And that, that's the thing, I think Shawna, you can just change, that may have happened when they, when they put this in the electronic form. Good catch, though.
Yeah, Ryan. You know what?
Well, two and three, right?
I think it's getting too far in, I'll call Councilman Hill.
So Ryan, that's item two and three on that, right?
It looks like it's incorporated areas.
Oh, incorporated, okay.
Yes, it's just two.
Okay, just two.
On three, two, five, it talks about in letter B. That the impact fee schedules are amended from time to time. What, I mean, is that year by year, every few years?
No, it's very seldom because again, the cost of doing a study is pretty high and you don't do it very often.
Alright, thank you.
So, on the consolidated fee schedule, does it list? Impact fees for roads, parks. All those things that we just talked about, does, does it, storm drainage, transportation? And the sewer is in here, but the other three are not. Three dash two A dash two has the sewer impact fees. But. Park, storm drainage and transportation, I couldn't find within the body of this, I just wondered if it's on a schedule somewhere.
I guess it's on the consolidated fee schedule, but I don't have that in front of me, so I'm not sure. Shawna, how do you decide what the amount is, where do you go to when you look up the amount of the impact fee?
Yeah, it's just on the.
So it's assessed per subdivision or per home, basically?
Or, or building permit.
Okay, okay.
I'm not familiar with some of this three, two, A two, where it says. Identified Freedom North, Low and Town Zones have a certain fee.
That's based on some of those areas.
For those?
Of a gravity fed. The other, there aren't.
Okay.
But when they.
So is that something that needs to be?
There still could be potential that they.
There's some that's still in there.
Tell me where that was again.
Three, two, A, two. Amended sewer impact fees enacted. Three, two, A, two? Apple?
Where the sewer impact fees are listed. One's forty twenty one, the other one's forty three thirty eight.
That those fees would start on September fourth of two thousand nine?
Right, yeah, that would be up to, you guys didn't delineate anymore.
But we still have in the very southeast corner, that subdivision. Going in.
Oh.
That'd be in the Freedom area? Isn't, isn't that lift station fed, that's not, that's not vacuum sewer, is it?
That, what you said is right, there's only the three vac stations, so those would be. Lift stations, area that you just talked about up behind the elementary, right?
And so that's the last little bit, those are just.
And Turner Legacy and then the one to the south.
I didn't know that, why they were charged differently, I didn't know that they would.
Yeah, I, they just, I think they just, I mean, and I wasn't here when this was done.
Right.
I, I don't know, but, yeah, they're, when they put the impact through the building permit, those are what.
Okay, thank you.
And that's probably based on like a study that was done that recommended the fees that we charge.
Vacuum is much more expensive than gravity.
That was implemented on September fourth of two thousand nine, is there any? Increase now?
There could be, but we would have to have a, the study.
The whole new study?
That's not something we could just say, oh, let me recommend, yeah, we.
Okay.
Those are very, very, very detailed and we would, would contract a consultant to do that.
Thank you.
I think is Reed, isn't that what you're saying, if, if we're wanting to change any of those impact fees, now is the time to start the process during this. Open period, right?
Absolutely, and, and they, they are at least ten years old and probably some of them older than that, so it makes a lot of sense to go through the process.
Yeah, so we need to kind of circle back around to this and have a deeper discussion on our impact fees.
I think that to start off, it might not hurt to have staff take a look at what the impact fees are in surrounding areas. And if they're significantly higher than ours, ours are probably not properly calculated with increasing costs. Because everyone adopting would have had to go through the same process, so if, if you look at all the adjoining cities and they're higher than we are, it probably means. They've gone through an analysis more recently than we have and it would. Maybe allow us to steal some of their material and also do a study ourselves.
Oh, is, could we ever take into consideration how different our system is from theirs, I mean, we really. The only way we ever gravity feed. In Hooper is where if we're gravitating, you know, we gravity feed to one of these lift stations that, where we actually have a lift station in. In a certain subdivision like up in Freedom. Everything else we vacuum in, which no, there's no one else, there's no surrounding city. Around us in the state of Utah that would vacuum. From a zone and pull that into a lift station and then lift it. So we've got the three vacuum stations and it referenced here, you know, we've got the low. The town and the north. That is just, it's just so unique, I mean, there's a lot more. There's, there's maintenance on vacuum feeding that in as opposed to gravity feeding it in.
Yeah, and you're gonna have a lot better information on that now than you had back before the sewer system.
Yes, we, we have a lot better information now.
So, the starting, I'm not suggesting that, that we would be the same at all as other cities. But it, it, it would be an indication, if you looked at Syracuse, for example, and their fees were higher than ours. That doesn't make sense, ours probably ought to be a lot higher than theirs because of the time we have.
And there are some things that we can just look at, you know, when you, when you mentioned Reed about the age of them, I mean, some of these have. Life expectancies that's actually being metered, in other words, if they have a twenty thousand hour. Life expectancy on, on a vacuum pump, for example. And we look at that and there's nineteen thousand hours on it. I mean, it is something that we need to, you know, start looking at and. And as you mentioned, we need to get some good information that would. Be how we're going to handle upgrading those.
So back to, back to Reed's comment on the telecommunications, telecommunications section. I didn't see it in here, but is there somewhere that it talks about what is telecommunications and what is not? Like the internet based services, for example? Is there definitions? Is there definitions?
I think that's where it becomes confusing, right? I mean, right, this is definitely telecommunications, but yet we're.
Well, we have our definition, but it refers to the state code for the definition. That's right at the end of three dash three dash one. So if you go to three dash three dash two and look right above it, it gives you the definition. But that's probably changed in the state law significantly recently as well with the same issues in mind.
So are we thinking that definition needs to be updated? Doesn't really describe.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Again, there's, there's a lot of discussion with these folks that are putting in internet as to whether they're subject to these rules or not, because they're claiming internet is not telecommunications, but that really isn't true because it is. So that's a, a discussion that's been, that's going on statewide. So you may have to demand that internet providers break out what percent of their work is conferencing like this and talking back and forth as opposed to just traditional internet where you're searching up some topic. Email, again, is that telecommunications? Certainly seems like it.
Do we currently collect four percent tax on that? Is that what three dash three dash three talks about?
Well, the amount that you can collect has been changed to three point five by state law. And whether we're collecting that on those types of operations, I couldn't tell you.
Well, and a lot's changed, right, in the last sixteen, going on seventeen years.
The world has changed in the last seventeen.
The whole, right, the whole world has.
So we need to do a little education, I think, for, for the council and certainly for me on just how we're gonna do all of this. But it's a potential nice revenue source and if, if we can get it all worked out, we want to make sure it works. What kind of revenue are we getting from that now, Shawna? Do you know?
I don't, don't. I'm not really involved with that. I think all, but I can, I can find out those.
Well, maybe we ought to go to title five or title four.
Kind of spin this bit over here and then we'll move. And that, and that's not really like, I'm not the deciding fact. They'll, they'll know that commercial business license, licenses always come to you guys for approval. And then other than I take the information, I try to make sure that it's all accurate and that it complies with the uses that we've allowed in this ordinance. And it essentially always goes the mayor.
Well, one thing that Shawna and I talked about earlier today, if you go to four dash six dash four, talks about license fees. The definition of what those terms mean may need to stay in the statute, but the fees themselves, it would seem like ought to go into the unified fee schedule rather than in the, in the ordinance. That way it's a lot easier to change them.
Yeah, we had kind of talked about these fees all stay the same and they are represented in the consolidated schedule. But I think for longevity, it would be better for us to reference those numbers in the fee schedule that ensure, in making sure this information is correct instead of listing out the actual money totals or monetary charges who are more easily able to adjust.
That, that makes a lot of sense to do that. Make reference to the fee schedule so that we could go in and adjust the fee schedule without having to go back and change.
And then the, the Shawna, I think, mentioned that now some we can't charge fees on, so we need to make sure that's clear in here as well.
What, what was your question on four, on eight? That periodic inspection is that?
Do we have an inspector that does that? I know we have our inspectors for other things. I'm just wondering, being a business owner in the in the city, I don't know if I've ever had a business. I mean, I don't know how long you've had your business, but when you spent for a business license and you are a business, a new business, that's all I can. You're a new business and that business has public come into your facility, commercial facility into your, even your home, if it's a consulting, you have a home office. You do do a safety inspection and that's our building official. The periodic inspection is, and we can ratchet that down, we can tighten it if you see there's areas that there's issues, but what we have done is about, so when it's a daycare or a hair salon or a nail salon, those types of things require health, safety inspections from Weber Morgan Health Department. And those are, you know, documented and put into the file. And then daycares are done every year. We always make sure we ask for that additional information. And then the periodic inspection is about every like five, three to five years. When we go to do our annual renewal, we send out another thing for those specific businesses that deal with the public in that way or provide services in that way. And, and we have them have an additional inspection. Okay, thank you, that first up.
All right, close to that section, four dash one dash seven talks about license designees. So basically the sheriff and all deputy sheriffs, the fine director, director of licenses, designees, building inspector, and so on and so on. Talked about basically if they come to a knowledge of persons doing business without a license, that they should let the license director know. Does that happen?
It happens sometimes, yeah. So we do coordinate closely with the, we were fire. So we, we send them over annual reports for all our commercial businesses and they kind of let us know if they find something on their inspection requirements that maybe we haven't set them in the past. And then also similar to like our ordinance officer, so if they, you know, within their duties, if they go out there and they see something because they're there for another inspection, then they usually inform us and we try to, try to reach out and say, you know, we know you're running a business, this is the requirements within Hooper City. Kind of fill this out and register and get your, get your license.
So the reason I bring that up is jumping to four, seven, fourteen, talking about slaughterhouses. We in fact have one that's illegal or had one, I don't know.
Over on a subdivision, sunny.
Cease business or not, as they were going to. But can we have the sheriff enforce that?
Well, we already talked to our ordinance editor, ordinance officer. She's been made aware of it and she, if any other, we see any other activity out there after, after the first of March, you'll, you'll go out there.
Yeah, so we've been working with the.
Yeah, State Department.
The State Department, just what's legal, what's not. We know that not technically, those are allowed in Hooper, not in that zone. And we don't technically have a zone for that and, you know. We're working through that supposedly. That was supposed monitored as of March first, so if there's any additional activity.
So.
Right, and, and that is an activity that is pretty obvious to the neighbors out there.
Yeah, I think, I think so. And I think the one positive thing about contracting through Weber County is they work closely on the sheriffs. So it's been a lot easier for us to obtain maybe access or warrants that would allow us access onto property that we wouldn't have. So yeah, she would work, if it had, if it was escalated to a point where that was the, what we needed to do, then she would work closely and coordinate that with the sheriff's department or the other departments, whoever's jurisdiction that is.
And we've involved the Weber County brand inspectors too, to make sure that there's records made. These grant inspections have been made the day that someone's been out there slaughtering the cattle. Harvesting, harvesting the cattle. Maybe that sounds better.
I don't know, I just wanted to tell the mayor that if you look at four dash seven dash five, this should be good news maybe for him. We're talking about the cabaret.
Yes.
The last, the last sentence of that, it says, and where the patrons there may not dance.
That, that is good news. That, that is good news.
So, so on to that.
In fact, I'm underlying that.
Just a little bit. It probably would be advantageous if you could reach out to some other council members. As we work through the general plan and as we work towards putting in some more areas of council, making sure we have a solidified for businesses that you would like to not like to certain businesses of sexually orientation businesses. There's specific ordinances out there through other cities, SOBs and what will allow and what we won't. And we don't really have that because it's never been an issue, but since you touched on that, it's, it would be proactive for us start looking into those types of things as we work to bring in more commercial. I know, I saw that, I was like, what?
On the paragraph about fireworks stands, does there need to be a fee in that paragraph or is that on the fee schedule as well?
It is on the fee schedule and I think me and Reed will work towards actually taking off the fees, retail licensing fees listed in this ordinance so that they're only reflected on that.
Now, the two that are a little different would be chapter eight and nine, residential solicitation and homes and a home, well, eight, nine and ten, home businesses and special events. So if you've had a chance to go through those, those are ones that you might want some input from Shawna as to how they're working. And if you have changes, those are ones that certainly we ought to look at.
I had a question on four, eight, two. You know, they have to come in and get a license, a certificate to do that and then get an identification badge. I personally would not know if that identification badge was real or fake because I don't know what that's supposed to look like. I don't know if there's a way for us to make aware to the Hooper residents, like this is the correct, you know, these are the things you need to look for to make sure it's legal. Because I, as soon as somebody knows that we have, you know, certain badges or whatever they need to show, that can be copied really easy.
Sure. So when solicitation requests come in, they do fill out a, fill out an entire form, require background checks for not only Utah, but if they have an ID from a neighboring state, we require both. So we receive that documentation first before we even issue a solic. We also take into consideration that we would verify the company. There's a copy of the business license for that company. We verify all that information. And then they do receive a badge with the city logo on it, with their picture on it. Require, essentially we require passport photo. That goes with the badge. And they're required to wear that. So from time to time, we do get calls from citizens saying, I've had someone at my door. Do they have a solicitor's license? And if they don't, we call the sheriff's department, let them know that they need to have a solicitor's license. What we could do if we wanted to educate more of the citizens on what that badge really looks like, so we're not, oh, so no, so people know that it's real or not, we could maybe put that into the newsletter saying, hey, this is what a solicitation badge looks like. And, and they're not allowed to be in the city unless they have one. Anything like that.
Back to your question, can you stop them from reduplicating and making their own badge? A violation of our ordinance by soliciting without a license is a pretty minor violation. But if you start forging a badge, that's a much more serious offense. So if they get caught doing that, the ramifications are pretty serious.
It depends. We have options. So we have, we have a fee for just, these of them, we have a fee for longer and they can pick which one they want. But there's a fee for every person that's out there walking.
Each person?
Yeah.
Okay. I just got a text from Jolie. He says he can't hear some of us, so.
Easy to hear, Shawna. The council members are pretty hard. You need to talk into those mics, I guess. Why don't you go through each one of you? I can tell you whether you're being heard or not. No? Well, just not with that.
But it has like a divider on it, so it won't, it doesn't like to overlap. Supposed to be clear for Zoom, so it will have a delay as soon as it picks up your voice, so maybe tap it and then give it a trying to get him fixed. I wasn't talking loud enough. But now I am. It's up, I can read it on the screen, so something's coming along.
Now I'm read, you have to read the screen, okay?
I also had a question. And this is probably a person that would not have a solicitation license. But every once in a while through the community, there'll be somebody that orders blacktop for their driveway or their home. And then, you know, the, the people go around and try to sell the extra. Like, oh, your neighbor just did this and we've got this extra. We'll charge you this much to put it down. But I was at my parents' home when somebody tried to do just that. And so I said, well, do you have a license to do that over here or was that just for that, you know, and so they?
Yeah, so that, that's unfortunately like a seasonal issue and we kind of prepare for that every season to have that type of work being done in the city and we watch for it pretty closely. But that's even completely separate. They need an excavation permit because they're actually working in the city right away. And there's standards for that because what ends up happening is they do lay that, then the drainage is off. It drains from their yard, but it floods for your, so it's, it's a pretty serious thing. And the minute we see that, we usually are out there, Public Works is usually out there with the sheriff.
Okay, thank you. That's just like, I know they're not licensed to go out and just sell the rest, so.
But they would be in violation of this ordinance, by the way.
And then I had another one, sorry. Four dash eight dash nine, time of day restrictions for that soliciting. Four dash eight dash nine, time of day restrictions for that soliciting. You can't do it before 9:00 AM and you can't do it after 9:00 PM. I think that 9:00 PM is a little late for somebody to, I mean, they could come to your door at 8:50 PM and still be legal to solicit and that's kind of late at night for some people.
In the wintertime, yes. Summertime, probably not, but seasonal for sure.
Well, soliciting.
We've never really had anyone apply for outdoors for months. It does come around spring and summer. It tends to be geared towards solar, I don't know that they ever get legal. Security systems, solar systems, things like that, pest control.
Okay, so it's more seasonal, so that timeframe's not a big issue.
It's up, you can change it, can change it. All, all I can speak to is we haven't had any, we have complaints about people who are not licensed, like registered solicitors. We've never really had a complaint as far as, you know, I had this license come to my door at a late, I had that complaint.
So anything, if we go to the next one, any, any comments on the home occupation business issues?
The only suggestion that I had, I just haven't already considered it, is on four, nine, three, and I had talked to Reed. We don't really, the state passed legislation a few years ago and we don't really classify the home occupations like this anymore. So it would just be an update to what we're labeling these, so it complies.
And the four, nine, four amounts probably ought to be in the fee schedule as well.
Right, and then moving amounts. So we don't, the state passed legislation that would exempt home occupations that have no offsite impact to zero, so not going to be allowed to charge. So that's what we've done. So we switched it to just minor and then to like large. So if you have like inventory, vehicles, trucks, like that, you're still just in the large. And then if you have non-impacted business, then it's just minor, which we don't, we ask that you register so we can keep all that documentation because it could change again and we want to make sure we have that. There's no technical year lease. If you need a documentation, then there's a $15, just one time fee and we'll print you a license. There's no.
So I did have a question about that next paragraph down, conditions, employees, it's following large. So large just talks about shall limit employees to members of the family who reside on the premises. So what happens when they have employees that are not members of the family that work in the home? What, what does that classify as?
So they could have two additional employees that come to the home, that's it. And then the. So they can have the people that live in the home, is that what you're saying?
So like, I know one, for example, that has more than two additional employees on site that are not family members.
So that, when they come in for a business license, give them a copy, ordinance restrictions, and so they have more than that on there, we just need to be.
So it's not a different classification?
Just really not allowed. The point of the home business is that nobody would really know that you're running a business out of there. If, if it is, it needs to be in a commercial zone. And I don't know what business it is, we can talk about it later, might not even be out in a resident.
The problem, the problem with, is I'm in that group and it's, you know, there's the large business, this whole thing needs to be redesigned. It's not right. I mean, how I'm getting charged with a large business, sole proprietor, I go to work in my truck, I don't get no deliveries. I get, I'm at large business, I get charged the same as any large, it just seems wrong. No, there's not. We battled this and battled and battled and buying a large business. That's why I said, there's got to be more guidelines on this than. I'm just telling you, I get no deliveries, you know, I just, one of those deals, one of those deals, but I think there's got to be a little more guidance on this.
Well, I was going to say, it seems to me like the construction arena definitely like that, that two more people in your family, I, I can flip through my brain, multiple places that have two, three, or four more employees, at any given time, they work off that home site, out of a garage, out of a shop. They're not necessarily impacting the community, I mean, they're parking, but it's still, I think we probably just need to clean it up.
I don't know, we need to clean that up for sure, in my opinion, that's a big time.
Four, nine, three dash A specifically lays out what's small and what's large.
Where they've changed it to minor.
I've been, I've been a large business in Hopper for 15 years. I've been a sole proprietor this whole time. Nothing has actually ever changed. So I'm just telling you, that's what I've been. They just, if I, what they told me is that if, did I have a computer? And I said, yes. And they said, well, then you're a large business. Go ahead and laugh, I'm just telling you what they told me.
100% of an accessory, believe me.
You have deliveries, you have, you have employees, you have retail sales at your home.
Mine was identical for 10 years. I have a, I had a truck and a trailer.
I don't have a trailer, I don't have a trailer that I use.
More large business as well?
Yeah, I, I.
Because everything was lumped into that, I'm trying to tell you, everything, there wasn't really a small business. A small business, I guess, is somebody that actually doesn't have a computer.
Well, but, so my question is, was this written? Maybe this has been adjusted for that.
So, yeah.
I'm wondering if this is, I'm wondering if this has been changed since then.
So I don't know, I don't know about that. And I just take over for renewals, so if that's what's continued to be paid, then that's fine. But if someone was to come in for a new business now, we have it as a minor, that is somebody who, we do allow people who just have an office only, right? So you don't have anyone come to your home, don't have storage, shipping, in none of those things, you don't have a sales tax number, nothing. That would, that is what I would consider a minor home business, which how I would process that would be an exempt status. So then, then the home occupation, which is, we don't separate it from large, small, minor, we don't do that anymore. So it's just minor, which is exempt, and then just a regular home occupation, which is what we'll clean up, or what I'm suggesting to clean up here. So the home occupation is somebody who has shipments, sales tax license, inventory, employees, things like that. Then that's, that's where I would classify as a home occupation. So if there's really an issue with maybe how you've been, I don't always know, some of it's just a continuation of how it was. So if it's a, you know, a renewal of those types of things and how it is on the books, but if.
I actually did renew it in the process because one year I forgot to pay it. Definitely want to admit that part, but I still was classified as a large business twice. What I'm saying, I've gone through this process twice. Luckily, I didn't have to go to the city council, which I'm actually not to actually do that.
I have a question for thought as we're thinking through this revision and setting things up. Amazon, right? Deliveries to everyone's house, I'm sure, if they don't come to your house, then you're probably unique. But when we say deliveries, right? How do we differentiate what a delivery is? Like what, what defines a delivery? Because there's not going to be a business that exists in today's world that doesn't get a delivery, large or small, to their house.
It's mostly people that like package and ship.
Right.
That's what it is. Packaging and shipping.
Define that because delivery is pretty broad.
Yeah, and we can, like I said, we can adjust. Yeah, inventory. Yeah.
Maybe on this one, because there is quite a bit of interest, we ought to just have a, a block, a block on the council agenda on a future agenda where we just talk about this and this alone. Everybody will have a chance to read it carefully and talk to neighbors and that might be helpful.
Like to talk about the penalty for not getting your business license.
I was more worried that I was going to have to come to the city council. Because back then, everybody came to the council, I'm like, oh boy. I did, I had, I had originally, just through, you know, my great.
Originally, all business licenses came to the council and then it just got too much and so.
Yeah, but that, back then, everybody came, I wasn't ready to do that, I wasn't ready in that actually.
Well, we can make the changes that we've talked about, but Mayor, give that some thought. Might be good to have a full discussion on this one because it.
Okay, I noted that, so.
In a year like this, where so many are working at home, it might have a lot of interest and might be worth taking a look at in some detail.
Business in that and then actually talking to people that just renewed, so you're not a large business. I mean, I think maybe we got to reach out to them at the end of the year or the first year, whenever you renew businesses, find out people that fit the different criteria because I'm pretty sure I'm not alone.
So Shawna, you said we are not charging the definition of small business anymore?
No, that's correct. So it'd be exempt. And then some of them still find that they need the actual physical city licensing documentation. So that's the case, we just do a processing fee at the $15 and that just, that license that they need.
I have to have it for work from home, actually.
And once we get all this updated, go through and saying, these are now the definitions for your home business, as we work through these, kind of classify, reclassifying, they're still valid.
Let's move to the last one, special events ordinance. Any thoughts on that? Shawna, how's that work?
So this, we don't, we don't have a ton of special events, but this is just geared towards typically that maybe come into the arena, have a rodeo separately or come to this park and have a commercialized event for spectators in public. So we don't have that many ones, we, I don't even think, we haven't had one. The last one we had was St. Mary's Rodeo. Down there was the last special event that we had and after that, we haven't had any. But it hadn't, there were no issues. So they paid the daily arena fees, they paid the portion for your special events, which just allowed us to charge them for the maintenance that was required after their event. Ended up paying up of the park and, but I haven't had, hardly, we don't have them that often and the ones I have, haven't had any.
I have a really funny question then about ordinances and different things like that because it, you know, talks about how you, some might have to close a road or, you know, different things like that and you have to have contact. And this, for some reason, popped into my head is the, and I don't want to, I think they're doing a great service, but the Santa guy that sent out the map, they, they do it, they've done it for a couple of years now, but they sent out a whole map this year about where they would be traveling, a wet road.
Oh, like a parade?
Where to stop and everything like that. Is that, I mean, I think that's a great idea, but I didn't know if that was something that they would need to come and get permission for, where it's using the city.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's not limited to parades, like, so we could.
They do, you know, they come down 4,600 here, they come around, they went, I don't think they go down 5,900 or up around 4,000 or anything like that. They are from down 46, down west, but.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a, if it's a big enough thing, then, okay.
And they sent out maps and they came to me, however, anyway, in the mail and told us what time they'd be in the area and the whole map of everything.
Yeah, so I mean, that's probably something we'll just, or do they do it?
No, it's during, yeah, it's during Christmas. In fact, my neighbors asked me, they're like, when did the city start doing this? I'm like, yeah, it's not the city.
Okay, yeah, we'll just have to keep an eye on it.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, I think it's a good thing that they were doing, I just didn't know.
Yeah, I mean, we'd want to make sure that they're being, want to make sure that they have the proper permits for fire, Weber County, Weber sheriffs. If, and we don't want anyone to get hurt or whatever, I don't know what they're doing.
Any other, any other items? That kind of brings us to the end, if there's not any other discussion on that. Okay, seeing that there's not any other discussion, has, have there been any other citizens' comments that have come in since we've been reviewing this?
There isn't any citizen comments, but I'll just go ahead and, and just for the record, there was a chat that came through when we were talking about the arena. I think the question was just whether or not, with the grants that we had got, if it will affect the arena, our upgrades that we want to put in. And with the grants that we just got, that it won't be directly affecting the arena. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Right.
But I don't have any requests, public comment.
Okay. Well, seeing there's, there was not any other public comment, we would, anyone here? Okay, we would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion, a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you, we're adjourned.